Good evening, everybody. It is 6:01 PM on May 6, 2025. Calling to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We begin each of our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. This evening, Councilman Alexander is going to offer the invocation. Councilman Jones will lead us in the pledge. I'd invite you to stand with me, please.
Thank you, Father, for a beautiful day that you've given us, the breath in our lungs and the ability and the privilege of being here tonight. And so we ask your blessing upon everyone in this meeting. God, would you guide this council in decisions to be made, Father? And Lord, we ask they would be pleasing to you. We ask these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Ms. Ketchum, call the floor for us, please.
Vice Mayor Hayes.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Carter.
No, I see.
Somewhere.
I've seen him.
Councilman Phan.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Present.
Councilman Jones.
Here.
And Councilman Juwontz. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. This evening, you have two sets of minutes. One is from July 16 of 2024, and the other is from April 15 of 2025. So I'm sure you all remember the July meeting well.
Well, and we do an audit every year to make sure we got everything and picked it up, and that was one that we got left out last year that we didn't get approved. So that's why it's on here tonight.
Catches us up.
Motion to approve, ma'am.
Okay. Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, a second by Councilman Fennell. Are there any corrections or additions requested?
Yes, Councilman Jones, the second.
Oh, it was Councilman Jones with the second. I apologize. All right. So no corrections, additions? All right. All in favor of approving the minutes from July 16 of '24 and April 15 of '25, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Both sets of minutes are approved unanimously. This evening, we have public recognition on agenda-related items at the beginning of this meeting. We have public recognition also at the end of the meeting, and that is for anything that's not on the agenda. So you have an opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting for items that are on the agenda, at the end of the meeting for items that are not. We ask if you're going to speak that you give us your name and your address. You'll have five minutes to speak. And with that, I'll open public recognition on agenda-related items and welcome anyone to the podium that would like to speak. Well, see, no one then. Public recognition on agenda-related items is closed. We will move now to Mayor's comments. We haven't met since the Square Fest took place, and as always, compliments to historic downtown Gallatin. It was a tremendous event. They wound up with absolutely beautiful weather for the day and great attendance, great work by our public works folks. Of course, police and fire were out there, working in various capacities. It was just a really great day all around for Gallatin. So many attendees, and everyone really seemed to enjoy it. Also, I want to mention Station Camp High School. The flowers have now gone on the square, and for many years now, I'm not sure how many, Jeff, do you know? Many years, Station Camp High School has been responsible for our flower baskets on the square. So they look a little sparse when we first hang them out, but they're really healthy, and they're going to thrive and be absolutely lovely throughout the summer. So if you see a Station Camp FFA student, tell them you recognize what they do, and we're most appreciative and really, really proud of them. A couple of events that I do want to share with you, Council and any employees who may be here remember the City of Gallatin Employee Picnic is on the night, and that's from 11 to 2 at the Triple Creek Park Pavilion. This weekend, the Airport Breakfast begins, Appetites, Airplanes, and Automobiles. Always a great time, happens from 8 to 10 out at the Music City Executive Airport. Farmer's Market is open now. That's every Saturday from 9:00 AM until 1:00 PM. There's a Mid Cumberland Food Drive at Triple Creek Park Pavilion from 9:00 until 1:30. And the Gallatin Coin and Currency Show is happening at the Gallatin Civic Center from 9:00 AM until 4:00 PM. Interesting speaker at the Gallatin Chamber of Commerce this next week, Mark Yzel, from the Department of Tourism, is going to be there. If you're interested in attending that. Coming up next week, Welch College has their Strong and Courageous Banquet. Unfortunately, it's on Tuesday, as it always is, so it doesn't make many of us able to attend, but I know it's always a great thing. On the 15th is Peace Officers Memorial Day. There was a service held today by the Sheriff's Office in honor of that day, and I'm sure it was lovely. I didn't get to attend, but in the past, when I have, it's always been very nice. So where Sneakers are having lunch at the Civic Center on the 15th, on that day, at 12:15. And the Red Cross, I failed to mention, is having a blood drive on the 14th. And then coming up on the 16th, so very, very important. Chief Beaman's birthday, Good Morning Gallatin on that morning with the state legislative update. This will be a good one because it'll be their wrap-up with our state representatives telling us what all happened in the General Assembly this year. Kids to Park State happens on the 17th. That's at Triple Creek. And I think that will be all for now. I do have a proclamation to present this evening, so I'm going to ask Mr. Charles Durflinger from our Building Department to join me at the podium. I think we all have a great sense of how much our Building Department does for our city, making our property safe and long-lastingly inhabitable and keeping so many people safe in so many ways. So this is Building Safety Month. This is a proclamation to recognize that, and so I will read it quickly, and Mr. Durflinger will accept on behalf of the Building Department. Whereas the City of Gallatin is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence and the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved, excuse me, in the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, permit associates, building and fire inspectors, plan reviewers, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Mission Impossible is the theme this year for Building Safety Month 2025, encouraging us all to raise awareness about planning for safe and sustainable construction, career opportunities in building safety, understanding disaster mitigation, energy conservation, and creating a safe and abundant water supply to all of our benefit. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by our local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and properties. So now therefore, I page Brown. Do you hear about the claim that the month of May 2025 is Building Safety Month and encourage all citizens to join with their communities in participation of this important month of recognition? With that, I would invite Mr. Durflinger to say a few words. Might really mention the opportunity for careers.
Yes. Thank you very much for this time and for the recognition for Building Awareness Month. Some of the things that are important is that, as a lot of people may not know, the careers in the building code industry are made up by a bunch of old farts, for the most part. And all, I say that jokingly and lovingly, but that being said, we do need a younger environment of people coming into the career field to help develop and maintain the level of competency that is here today, because a lot of them are retiring out, and people that are coming in don't have the experience that's been around for the years that's been there. Thank you very much.
His colleagues might call him Durf. There are great opportunities in building safety, and so I'd encourage young people to check that out, especially if they're unsure what they might do. Do you want to get a picture? Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, and thank you for what y'all did. All righty. Okay. Moving on now to the regular, what a fun way to move into the regular agenda, which we began with the second reading of ordinance 02504-22. Councilman Juwontz is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an ordinance appropriating $189,600 received from the state of Tennessee for training supplements. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Juwontz, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions, any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02504-22. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passed unanimously. Item two is second reading ordinance 02504-23. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an ordinance to provide revenue for the City of Gallatin, Tennessee for municipal purposes for the 2025 tax year and the 2026 fiscal year. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Phan. I'll reiterate that this requires three readings before it comes law, and we will hold the third reading once we know the rate as is, and remember, our budget is based on a revenue-neutral rate. And so once we know what that rate is, then we would insert that before we passed it on third reading. Everyone's clear on that?
I wanted to clarify that, to make sure I understand right. So what's in this ordinance right now is still that last year's rate. We have not changed anything, and we won't until we.
Know what the.
Third reading. Thank you, Mayor.
Right. So any questions, clarifications? All right, it's second reading. I'm sorry, Councilman Juwontz recognized.
Send that on the first reading. I know we need a third reading, but I would abstain until I get the full rate.
Okay. This is second reading on ordinance 02504-23. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
Sorry, Mayor. That is our rate.
I'm sorry.
This is not a reappraisal year. That is our rate.
But they don't still reset it based on the things that get adjusted?
Appeals, no. This is our rate until we have another reappraisal.
Thank you.
Or until Council chooses to change.
All right. Thank you.
I would change my vote, too, yes.
Okay, so then we can say it passes unanimously. I thought it got adjusted. Okay. Item three is second reading on ordinance 02504-24. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 14, Solid Waste, Section 149, Collections, Services, and Fee. Motion to move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jones, second by Councilman Fennell, opening the floor for discussion. Councilman Juwontz.
Thank you, Mayor. As you probably think about it, my constituents are not happy about that raise, and I understand that because people are still struggling. Now, the first thing, what I would like to know is how much money the Resource Authority have in a bank, and if they can, if they can keep the rate we're supposed to have at least for one more year until the economy gets better and people can afford one more raise. We already raised the gas, raised the water. I understand there is a cost. That the first thing I would like to know is that, because if there is plenty of money, maybe they can wait a little to raise our rates.
I don't know what their balance is. I bet you don't know off the top of your head.
Not off the top of my head, but looking at our budget for this coming year, based on the figures and everything, it's going way down. I mean, we cannot wait another year, no. We're pushing it out now till July.
Problem is the increase in fees that's coming to them from Smith County.
And we're looking at maybe going back up again next year, too. So, you know, we don't want to sit here and say, okay, let's keep the rate the same. Next year, let's go from, what, we're going from 16 to 21, and then jump it up to 25, you know, or something, so.
So another thing I already brought to you, and that still hasn't been fixed, is that the Resource Authority, the Resource Authority cannot change the rate. We have a max rate we set up by ordinance, and I brought that already. Nothing has been done, and if you want to change the rate, it needs to be done by ordinance. We have an ordinance, that the law. So I don't understand again why that has not been done.
Well, you know, we've been corresponding with the attorney, and I don't know.
They were waiting to get, last I heard.
Last I heard, they were waiting to get the, all of the updates from Smith County.
But again, we, until that is passed, the Resource Authority technically cannot raise the rate to the City of Gallatin. That's black and white. So, because if we start doing stuff like that, that means, what are we going to do when the citizen is going to come and we're going to go tell him they have to follow the code because we have an ordinance, and we don't do that as a governing body? So how can we expect our citizens to follow ordinance if, as a governing body, we don't follow the ordinance we have in place?
I don't think that this is something that we have complete control over. It's not like there's another option for us. Certainly, we're trying to keep the most cost-effective option there is. As we discussed before with the agreement that was in place, however many years ago, it's one of those things that got lost over the years that was supposed to be kept up. They're making the effort to do that now. They haven't at this date, but we don't have another option, and we can't, we can't get it done somewhere else cheaper or for the same price. We're working through that. We will get it remedied, and I know that there's been ongoing conversations. I have not, I didn't get to go to the last Resource Authority meeting. I was trying to, and they're working hard to make sure that we do have some resilience that we haven't had, and for that, I think they're going in a real positive direction. But I think, I've said for all the years I've been in office, trash is a serious issue that we, I mean, throughout the country, but particularly in the South, have not taken as seriously as we should have nor planned well enough for. And so while the costs are increasing, I fear it could get a lot worse, but for the efforts that are being made to have options.
Cost is increasing. I'm okay with that. My problem is that we have an ordinance we are not following. If we don't like it, let's change it. Why is not there an ordinance coming in from the body to modify the one was in place?
I can't force the Resource Authority to do anything. I don't have any authority or control over the Resource Authority.
But what he's saying is that we, as a city, have an ordinance, right? That's what he's saying? So is that.
We are amending this ordinance right now to update those fees. I think he's talking about the agreement between the Resource Authority and the city is what I understood he was talking about, that they would only.
Ordinance, ordinance 01, I need my glasses, I'm getting old. 01010-70 will fix the maximum rate that the Resource Authority can charge the City of Gallatin. And as far as I know, there is nothing will change that, so.
This would be a new ordinance with a different.
And does this say repealing all other, it probably says, I don't have it right in front of me, repealing all other ordinances. Typically, all of our ordinance is say that, repealing all other ordinances in conflict with. So this would repeal that ordinance.
But this one is a Gallatin Andersonville.
That's what I'm saying. I don't have control over those other bodies to force that to occur. So we're doing our part right now.
They know that we want it.
The Resource Authority is very well aware that we want that changed and to be brought up, and they've told me they're waiting on the Smith County and that they are going to do that once they get those numbers. I've done what I can do.
Did you, did you say you wanted to keep it the same until the economy gets better?
I would like to do that, yeah.
Well, I would too, but is our economy in this, this might be a question for Rachel. Are our sales tax revenues down?
Now, really, no, you know they're not. And I mean, I think, I think the state of the economy depends on the individual's perception. And, and the problem is, is everybody's dealing with inflation, and things cost a lot of money, and it's hitting them from every angle.
But I don't think our economy's that bad.
But I think the impact on individuals is.
Is bad.
Is felt.
Well, that's different, but I thought we were talking about revenue.
If it makes y'all feeling better, too, I think, you know, we've done studies on this, we're one of the cheapest, lowest rates around in middle Tennessee as far as trash.
Tipping fees, yeah.
I know Hendersonville's like, they don't even bring their Resource Authority, but they get their bid out every year. They're like $33.50, $34.
And I think one of the most important things when we talk about trash in Gallatin is that I'm very, very grateful that whomever, whatever point in time, decided that Gallatin would keep control of their trash services rather than contracting it out, because it has proven difficult in so many cities across this region to have dependable trash service where you can actually plan out what it's going to cost. I can assure you that if we were dependent on an outside contractor, our costs would be higher, and we would have far less control, and, and our service would not be as great as it is. I don't think our trash has been missed in all the years I've been in office. No matter the weather, they always pick up, plus doing the brush and the bulk, so we cannot underscore the value of that.
We booked that at one time back many, many years ago, and I think the cost was less, but the service was not going to be nearly as good. I think the cost might be less.
I think what happens is.
Because of your overhead and equipment and.
I think it starts out less, but once you're stuck, once you outsource, because then your option-only option becomes to hire the employees, buy the equipment, buy the facility, all the stuff that you have to start from scratch. And so even though costs do continue to go up, we're paying less than people are paying for their private trash service, substantially so. And our service is good service, and it is painful that everything is going up, and I do recognize that, but I don't know that anything's going down anytime soon. Any other questions about this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02504-24. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Passed at 6 to 1. Item four is second reading on ordinance 02504-25. Councilman Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $100,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance to 11041310-937-290, Clearview Park. Motion, send it on.
Okay, motion by Councilman Carter.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Hayes. Are there any questions, any discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. Let us talk about some savings possible. Can we get an update on that?
We don't have an update, but we are endeavoring to have some assistance from some of our departments to make it be less money. We discussed that we would go ahead and do these funds. That way they're there, and then what we don't spend, we'll go back into the general fund.
Another question. With this expense coming about, because we changed the building code stuff, if we went back and changed that, would we still need to do this at this point, or no?
Well, I mean, me frankly, I had reservations when it was done, and I have reservations now, realizing the impact that there's a big difference between 3,500 and 5,000, because most buildings fall below, not most buildings, I shouldn't say that, most residential structures certainly fall below 5,000 square feet, and, you know, it's just a difficulty when you're building a 3,500-square-foot building or building out a 3,500-square-foot building to have to sprinkle. And I had, I had thought the cost had gone down so significantly, but when we saw the cost on this, I was like, ugh, not sure that we've done a good thing. So, but anyway, to answer your question, yeah, we could go back, but I'm afraid the timing to go through the determination and the change and the implementation, it would delay this, and so in the long run.
No.
I think it's probably better to get it done and have a safe building.
Got you. All right, thank you.
Although I would contend that it would still be safe without that, so, my opinion. All right. Any other questions, comments? It's second reading on ordinance 02504-25. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Passed unanimously on second reading. Item five is first reading on ordinance 02504-26. Councilman Fennell, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $500,000 for the Hale Avenue Extension Project. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions, any discussion? All right. This is first reading on ordinance 02504-26. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Passed unanimously. Item six is first reading on ordinance 02504-27. Councilman Phan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $135,000 to repave West Easton Street and I so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Phan, second by Councilman Carter. Any questions, any discussion on this? Okay, it's first reading on ordinance 02504-27. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Unanimously passed. Item seven is first reading on ordinance 02505-29. Vice Mayor Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Hayes, a second by Councilman Fennell, opening the floor for any questions, discussions. Really haven't heard much about it, to update you all. We did get quite a bit of feedback from department heads, made several small adjustments just in the general budget, changed quite a bit with individuals and some position in the pay plan, oh, actually have an updated pay plan to pass out. You know, still, I think that there is some lack of confidence on instituting a pay plan like this, but I still think it's the right direction to go. I do have a PowerPoint. Courtney was going to try and make it back in time to do this for you guys, but she's not here, and so I will just go through a very brief PowerPoint with you, just to kind of give you some highlights of the pay study, where it came from and where it's going, and then she, in the future, will be able to talk more about it. We do feel like we have gotten most everybody in a, in a good competitive place, with everybody getting at least a 3% increase in their placement in the pay study. You'll recall that in those five steps that are initially shown, which we feel is the progression to proficiency, that we've also added in a 50 cents, which would make. to proficiency, that we've also added in a fifty cents, which would make, kind of give us a step ahead on being competitive in the market. Beyond the five steps, we have budgeted for three percent plus a dollar per hour. That is where the department heads would have discretion to use some merit influence. If not this year, then hopefully to help them get ready for the next. But that's what is currently budgeted. In the paper that you have, you don't see, okay, the five, the five steps, they're two and a half percent between each step, but it already has the fifty cents in. Beyond that, it doesn't have the dollar in, it does not have the three percent in, but all that is calculated into the budget. So just to kind of give you a quick overview of the pay study and the compensation plan, we'd been asked a lot about comparables, just to tell you, we did compare, I don't, do I have a clicker up here? Sorry. Let's see, might it work? It does. Okay, so the comparables, Lebanon, Hendersonville, Mount Juliet, Spring Hill, Portland, Sumner County, Brentwood, Bowling Green. In the private sector, we looked at entry level to semi-skilled local position listings. We did remember pay to subscribe with salary.com so we could get their data to use as well, and were able to use that effectively. For utility-specific positions, we looked at the American Water, Wastewater Association, and the American Public Gas Association. The position evaluations were compared to various external sources based on minimum requirements, including education, experiencing, licensing, and certifications. Current internal distribution of positions and reporting structures were also considered. In other words, you know, how many people is this position responsible for, or, you know, where do they fall in the chain of reports? So on the results, on the new compensation structure, and this is kind of what I just went over, the pay scale comprised of five steps per grade, representing minimum requirements to position to proficiency. There's a seven, five, seven point five percent distribution between grades, a two point five percent between steps. It obviously reduces the number of pay grades and pay steps significant, particularly pay steps significantly. And the idea is to move us more towards a system of merit. So the redistribution of positions based on market comparison, taking into consideration internal reporting structures is included in this structure. Off scale, once you get off the scale of the five steps, a lot of the department heads have had some angst, or I don't know if that's the right word, just concerned, because they're scared that we will appear to applicants that they top out after step five. And I said, you really need to reframe it, and the way that we will do listings is we will use the starting salary, but we essentially have no top out. And so if someone is here for a long, long time, and they continue to provide just top-notch contributions to the city, in theory, their pay should continue to rise. So what we have proposed beyond those five steps is the merit-based movement, and there can be some combination in there, again, at the department head's discretion, where they could balance it in a way that, based on the, you know, cost of living increase that year, they may do a partial part as a COLA, and the rest is merit, and then they would distribute it as they saw fit within their department. We'll point out that in this, this proposal, the thought is, is that the merit-based movement between steps would be position proficient and not necessarily once per year as we currently do. In other words, someone hires, they're tremendous, they learn immediately, and they're passing by people that have been here for years. There's no reason to keep them stepping through five steps for five years, because we will lose them if they are that valuable. Moving forward, tenured employees are not automatically capped or tied strictly to COLA increases, as some of our capped out employees have been in the past. This does provide department heads with the discretion to provide tenured employees with performance incentives and rewards. The proposed rule amendments to allow departmental discretion determination of proficiency, determination of position proficiency, and the step increases, as I mentioned, would not be limited to once per year. There are some changes that will have to happen with our personnel's, personnel rules relative to this plan. I am not Courtney, and together, Rachel and I may be able to answer any questions that you have. And if not, they'll have a second reading of this budget, and Courtney will be here, so, but I'm, I'm happy to give it a stab, so. You want something?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to understand how the five steps is going to work, because if...
What now? You're trying to understand how, what's going on?
Understand how the five steps is going to work, because if someone has been there for ten years, how do they start?
What now?
If someone had been working for ten years here, how do they start on the five steps?
They're out of that. They're, any employee that's been here for more than five years is going to be, well, I shouldn't say that, because we've increased some of the pay, because the pay increases. Well, where the employees fell in the steps was relative to their current pay, the market comparison, and they were placed in that step that was most sensible, that the department had agreed upon after review, and that's where they are. So some are still within that five step, but a lot are beyond that five step. And like I said, in, most employees are seeing at least a three percent just where they are, where they fall in the charts right now, and that's before the two and a half percent increase in the steps, and then the additional increase both on the COLA side and the percentage on the, on the beyond the step side. So not every employee is placed in five steps.
So you said we can increase, people can move steps more, because before that was every year. I think you said we can, steps don't have to be a year now. So how that's going to work for people who are not in the steps?
For what?
People who pass the five years, that's...
Past the five years, it would be the annual review. Remember, we're looking at the five steps as to proficiency, and realize that a lot of times when we hire people, we're not hiring them at step one, or even step two, depending on the position and the experience, they may be hired at four, and on occasion, higher. So they don't necessarily come in at step one automatically anyway. And then you go with the annual review scenario. And we're still kind of batting about the best way to execute. At one point, we were talking about, instead of using the annual review date, we were going to use like the beginning of the year, or the fiscal year. Still trying to figure out how, because, you know, somebody's going to lose and somebody's going to win in that scenario, because of where their date happens to fall based on their anniversary now. So we're still kind of trying to figure out what the most fair way is to do that, but we think we can write that in the next couple of years in a, in a way that makes good sense. You know, our goal in this is to be competitive, make sure our employees are fairly compensated, and, and, you know, we've been doing pretty well, but we will make sure we keep doing pretty well.
That's kind of blurry, that's complicated.
Tell me how you think it's complicated. Five steps, and then beyond that?
Yeah, beyond that, that means...
Have your five steps at two and a half percent. They're two and a half percent. Two and a half percent is period, that's it. Beyond that, there is some budgeted amount annually, based on the existing salaries in department, that money is budgeted, the department head has the discretion as to how that wants to be distributed. Remember, we always struggle, we struggle budgetarily with this. When you have, a lot of our higher wage employees are higher wage because they've been here so long, and so when you say you do a two percent increase, well, guess what? Those higher wage employees work out to be a much greater increase in salary than a low wage salary. So maybe a department head has people that are making really great salaries, and they know they're not going anywhere, and they're fine, but they're not stellar, but then they have these people that have just been here a couple of years, and he's, they're worried that they're going to leave, and they're going to go somewhere. Well, in that scenario, if I, with that department head, I would put more money towards those well excelling lower wage individuals, and less towards the higher paid, okay, individual. Does that help?
But if you give a, an amount of money like that to a department head, telling him, I don't know, you have a thousand dollars to spend, and he has fifteen employees, and he decides to spend five hundred on one, and twenty-five on another one, and so it's kind of, I'm all for merit, but what the, is there, there's going to be a gatekeeper there to make sure, because...
I don't know, I have confidence in our department heads and their ability to keep, I mean, because good employees make their jobs a whole lot easier. So there's going to be no incentive for the department head to not make sure their people are taken care of as well as they can within the confines of the budget.
But we're dealing with human, so there is always the human factor, the ala him, better than him. So even if they do the same job, and they do a great job, maybe I'm going to be inside to give him a little more than I'm going to give to him. It's, it's human factors. So what, will we have a process if somebody think they have left, left aside for any reason, where they're going to be able to come and say, hey, I'm doing a great job, but I didn't get anything? Why? That's, that's kind of...
And Courtney rushes in the door. Hey, I think, I think that is a duty of management. I think anybody that has been in a management role should be perfectly capable of figuring out how to make their department work. I think we have great department heads that would use this well. You know, my, I mean, depending on where we are budgetarily from year to year, for the years that I would be here, I would probably offer some guidance on, say, hey, you know, cost of living increase nationwide is this, you might consider doing a cross-the-board COLA of a dollar an hour, but then you might divide the rest meritoriously, and that's how that would work. And, and, and I'm not saying that means all across the board, because again, this gives them some flexibility on how to balance those wages where they're needed the most, and, and, you know, where they will retain our most talented people. So, yeah, I, I have faith in the management of our department heads, and y'all hired them, so you should too. He's asking about what the gatekeepers would be to make sure that employ, and, oh, and where I was going to say too, there would always be the scenario in which they could appeal to their supervisor, and to HR, and it could be investigated and justified, and...
One of the pieces, though, is that we are in the process currently already of updating the evaluation system. So we're looking at making sure there are metrics, a framework in place.
Department-specific.
And a matrix for, let's say, you know, if you scored seventy percent in your evaluation, that would be your three percent. If you did a little less than that, maybe you don't get the three percent. If you were a super stellar and, and got ninety-five out of a hundred points, then maybe it's a little bit more. One piece, and only because I was watching on YouTube as I rolled up here...
Oh, boy.
Was that the line is budgeted at three percent for, so it's the annual rate, which gives a little more wiggle room in allowing for not just a three percent if someone's evaluation is later in the year, it doesn't necessarily cap, like, so if someone's evaluation date is in March, and because someone back in November got, you know, slightly larger increases, it doesn't automatically mean that the person in March does not. It's, it's a budget bucket, and it's at the annual amount of three percent. So it is within the purview, at least in the proposal of the department head to split that appropriately. Not sure if that fully answered what you were asking before I walked in the door.
Yeah, I like, I like that better. If there is, if there is a framework to work with, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, we're, we're actually updating every single evaluation.
What I don't want is to be, to be a jungle where we're going to have, we've, we're going to have difference between every department, because at that point...
There may still be a difference between each department, because some may look at it more as a, I'll go with a dollar amount. So if your kind of, your budget bucket allows for, say, two thousand dollars per person, we'll say, they might split it by flat dollar amount as opposed to a percentage. That is where there's a bit more discretion, it seems, by department, and may be applied slightly differently. The plan is to have the, the evaluation be the basis for that, with a matrix involved, of how to kind of score, with additional training and potential rule updates. So that's my big caveat to all of that.
Now, that's a question probably for Rachel, if, on what you just said, if we go to a dollar amount, couldn't that be considered as a bonus instead of a raise?
Not saying that it would be a flat payment, it might be a dollar amount to be spread across.
Yeah, it would be like a dollar, like a dollar per hour, fifty cents per hour. It would not be, oh, here's five hundred dollars.
Yeah, not a lump sum, bonus.
Well, I mean, it could be five hundred dollars, but they would divide it out across the number of hours for the whole year. So it would become part of their compensation structure that would still grow as they were increased.
Yeah, because bonus are...
Bonus is taxed differently.
Tax a lot more than...
Correct.
Normal, so make sure that doesn't happen.
That's it, I mean, that's, it is, it is figuring some things out for sure, but, you know, we've been talking about it for years. I've had department heads that have offered to be guinea pigs for it. This kind of opens the door for getting us going in that direction.
Hey, can I say something?
Absolutely.
Oh, I worked, you know, I worked for the city about thirty years ago. They tried that, but all I'm saying, I know we got some good department heads, the crew leaders that's under them, if they could just communicate with them, they're going to have to really communicate with them to see who's on the scale, or what, you know, who's doing their job and not. And if they're not doing the job, just call them in and talk to them, you know, be open with them, and, because back then, I mean, you never, you know, like Jovan's was saying, I mean, I don't like you, so I'm going to give you this and this, but, you know, just be open with them, and, like I said, it's good, you know, I know we got some good department heads.
I think having some department-specific evaluations will help with those discussions. Also think some understanding of how having the discretion, the raises can, can benefit departments and those employees in those departments. I don't know if I shared with this room, but I know with the department heads, I had the conversation that somebody working for the city said to me that they left a job because they were making X amount of money, and they were busting it every single day, and some people that were in the same job, but had been there for thirty years and making twice as much, were just doing nothing. That is what this, I mean, if I could encapsulate, you know, the thought processes of this...
Yeah, that'll wear on you when you're doing your job, and you, like you said, and you busting your hind end, and, and then a man over here ain't doing nothing, you know? He gets the same as you getting, yeah, that's kind of a kicking throat.
Or a lot more because of tenure.
You're always got that problem with any company that's this big. How often is our performance reviews?
It's annual at the moment.
Annual. I don't know, you might look at doing it every six months, and if somebody feels like they're being underpaid, maybe the department head needs to show them why they are underpaid if they're not performing.
Unless you've got departments with a hundred people, so, a hundred people in a department, they've been doing a whole lot of reviews with that, I mean, it's hard...
You could do that annually for that matter, you know, they just have suffered, but...
The biggest thing is that the...
You take twenty people and tell them to do this budget right here, you're going to have twenty different answers, and we got to try something.
Well, I don't, and I don't think that there are people who are not performing, well, I could be wrong. There should be no one who is not performing well for the city of Gallatin that doesn't, that isn't, that their supervisor or their department head is waiting to their annual review to say, you're not doing your job well. I mean, that should be an ongoing, you know, let's improve your performance type conversation.
And that part of the evaluations, as we're working on the framework, includes things such as goals, and how, you know, how well you've met those goals, so you have to compare what you kind of wrote and planned out last year to what you've accomplished this year. It will be a bit more involved in our performance valuation process this year, or what currently is, but I have faith.
Do we, do we have a form to go by that, that checkpoints that the supervisor goes by?
That's, that's what we're creating now. So, right now, we have a performance evaluation, but...
But they have never been department-specific, and they are not helpful. They need to be
I mean, honestly, if you're, if you're showing up to work not showered and, and poor hygiene, that's... that shouldn't be, you know, 15% of whether you successfully pass your evaluation, you know? They should probably address that ahead of time. You know what I'm saying? So like, appearance doesn't need to be a huge portion of your evaluation. And right now, we have some categories that don't really fit. We are customizing by department, sometimes by position or position type, working on that actively, whether or not this goes through, honestly. But that will be a big part of laying the framework for how the merit portion is then provided.
And just for history's sake, for many, many years, the 2.5%, the step, as we call it, has been awarded at competency. And have we, have you seen any that weren't marked competent? I mean, they, it's pretty much automatic. They may, they may only get competency, but they're not going to get excellent or whatever the highest is. So, and to me, if someone's getting all excellence and somebody else is getting all competence...
I'm all for performance rewards, it's just figuring out how you give them, who gives them.
Trying to figure out. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The stuff I don't see and I think we're missing somewhere compared to cities I looked at are bonuses or incentive for development or, or training. I've been following mainly, you know, police and fire because that's, I have friends in police and fire, so I can follow easier. Like sometime they get, they get the bonus if they already trained, when they sign. Sign us bonus if you train, where depend on, on the amount of the bonus, it's actually, it's a good incentive and that can save us a lot of money because it's like a lot of job, what's cost the most on a job is the training part. Sending a police officer to, to, a green police officer to training is going to cost a lot of money. And if we even add a signing bonus for somebody who's already trained, ready to go, will be half of the cost of that, will save 50% and will get, you know, will get people already trained. And the same thing for, you know, people who have different languages, people who have high education and stuff like that.
They do start with better pay when they come in with their, you know, say they're already certified or they're already an EMT or they're...
And that could be part of the, you start at step three or step four rather than step one, or potentially you've been an officer, maybe you were an officer here for quite a few amount of years, you went somewhere else for some time. It might be that you technically start off step.
Thing that I fear when I see those done, because I, I've seen them done a lot, you know, particularly in some of the areas where they're pretty desperate. The thing I fear is like with our training, they're supposed to pay us back if they don't stay a period of time, because we pay for so much training, right? Well, guess what? Getting that is, you know, because they leave and their last paycheck's gone and they owe us these, you know, all this training money and, you know, we do try to collect it and some do pay it, but the same thing would be with the bonus. What's to say, you know, what ha... And I know that you can, you can stagger it, like you pay part on hire and part at six months and part at a year, but who's to say that they're not just going dash after that? And if you, you know, have some kind of three-year period, they're required to stay here to retain it or they have to pay it back, they're not going to pay it back. And so the, the tracking and the retention of that plus, and then this is like, I know Chief Bandy and I batted about bonuses a lot. Think of everybody that came to work for this city that did not have a bonus and, you know, that, I, I, I want to be respectful to that. And so I, I feel like the right way to do it is compensate them based on what they come offering to the city at a good level.
And part of the, the proposal is that if they do that training while they're here, maybe they do have the, the ability to move two steps that year instead of one. Or they move from, you know, step four to off step and potentially, you know, can look at the, the 3% bucket.
I'm okay with that.
Were there ever put in a program to, or did we have one to get reimbursement from these people? They on contract?
We have, we have a, I mean, we have a process, but whether or not the cost of, of following it legally, you know, we, we go through the process, we request it, we do all of this stuff, the city attorney does, but then the, the cost to actually collect from those who may be deficient at six months is probably more...
Because we're not talking large dollars.
Chase it than to, than what they owed.
I like, I like the idea of starting on higher step, but again, we should have that black and white, so people know what to expect and just, you know, because you're going to do, you know, you're going to do the hiring and maybe you're not going to be there and one of your people are going to do the next one. And this is going to be on a different scale of what you think, where if it's black and white, we can say, okay, if they have that, 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 they can start at step three and everybody's going to follow the same.
But there's always going to come into play, like the number one thing that we run into when people come here with experience, and not even with everybody, because a lot of people just come in here because they want to come here, is that we're trying to hire somebody from somewhere else. And so trying to justify their wage that is higher than what's paid, that is a far bigger challenge at this point than attracting people that want to work here, except in the, you know, lower skilled jobs. You know, I, the bonuses we really talked about when we were really struggling to get employees and public safety, but I feel like we were way past that hump. What else, y'all?
Maybe we need to talk to our legislators and just an example. I don't know if you could do a state law, but let's say Hendersonville steals one of our policemen, that they've got to compensate us for their training.
Hmm, yeah. I don't want more state laws that affect us at the local level. Must have just given us money.
I'm not chasing poachers.
Yeah, we, we, we've taken a few too, so... My favorite thing, though, is when people leave here and then come back. Makes me really happy.
And we think that the, the structure itself really is market competitive. I heard you mention that. And so while the signing bonus might bring them in the door, it's not what's necessarily going to keep them and keep them moving forward and keep them doing a great job for, you know, our citizens. So, but the potential of merit, the longer that they're here and not having an automatic cap out is a benefit that could affect many employees positively. It's changing a little bit of perception and perspective on what that chart really is, rather than here's, here's all y'all ever make.
I think before you came here, I, I think I mentioned, well, you, you would have heard because you were listening, that we, you know, we would advertise more paid, you know, starting at versus...
Generally, we'd be able to advertise at a range rather than just a specific step one, you know, and, and with rule change allowing department heads the discretion to reasonably, you know, choose a, a step other than one would allow for that.
That's, that's a good start. The other component is that we need to make sure that people have an option to move in their department and to grow in there, not to stay, you know, like Mayor was saying, 20 years in the same job.
Right, but some people want to stay 20 years. That's great. Yeah, that's great.
And as long as they're not just showing up to work.
Yeah.
They might continue to stay in that job for 20 years and they might still see an increase that may not have been available otherwise.
How are y'all? Anything else about the budget piece of things? We got, like I said, we got feedback from department heads. We made small adjustments. The ordinance does provide for that. Not to say that we won't find something between now and the second reading, but...
I had few, but I want to look at the new one before, so I'll get them for next time.
Okay. Very little difference, very little. We have a motion and a second, I think I recall. So it's ordinance 02505-29. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. My county needs an abstention. Councilman Javance?
No, I'm already done.
Oh, I thought you said you weren't going to vote until you reviewed it.
No, I say, I'm...
No, you're only going to see pretty minor changes with line items that are very small. That concludes the regular agenda. It takes us to other business. And Ms. Kettrell has some.
Thank you, Mayor. I have, is anyone in the audience tonight from TriStar Energy? Don't see anyone.
Lot of applications.
Right, and I think one of their requirements is that they have to have a representative here in case you have any questions of them.
And no one's here from TriStar Energy or Twice Daily.
If you don't, I mean, you're welcome if you want to go ahead and hear them. It doesn't matter to me, but I think that was...
On the next council meeting? Is that...
Motion.
What do you guys think? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to direct you.
Well, they, and they qualify for everything. I mean, there's not, there's not a problem with any of their applications.
Motion to defer those applications to the next meeting, I think would be appropriate. Don't you want to do the council, Alexandria?
Yes.
First, my Councilman Alexandria, second by Councilman Javance. All in favor of moving forward the 1, 2, 3, 4 requests from TriStar Energy to the next council meeting, which is the 19th, I think? 20th? Yeah, 20th. Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No. Okay, next, Ms. Kettrell.
So now, the next one is I have a retail liquor store application for a location of 2153 31E Highway, which is, and the name of the business is Savannah Spirits LLC. So located down by the Kroger marketplace in that area. The applicant is Michael Hen. He has met all the requirements of the city. This is a certificate of compliance for him to take his application to the Tennessee ABC Board and obtain his license. This is the first move for him to get his license. So the applicant is here tonight. If you have any questions, I can hope be able to answer those or I just need confirmation from this body.
Has he met all the requirements?
Has met all the requirements. And the requirements are the distance, the one mile distance that's required for all of the stores. The other application, let's see, the other, let me make sure, get them on.
Susan said it's probably prudent to name the applicants as well.
Michael Hen is applicant.
One applicant.
Just one applicant, uh-huh. And that he, that basically that is. He meets, oh, the background check, we do a local background check on that also, but the ABC will do an FBI background check.
I'm motion, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Wait a minute, I'll need to recuse myself from this meeting, okay?
Yourself for conflict? You don't have to leave. Oh, okay. He's recusing himself because he has conflict. A motion, we have a second. All in favor of approving the application for Savannah Spirits? Please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Stay.
Okay, so I have five in favor, one abstention and zero against. Is that correct?
Correct.
Five, zero, one. Yeah, I felt like we were electing class officers or something and he darts out real quick. Okay, so that concludes other business, although Mr. Carter said he did have one item.
Yes, ma'am. So I would like to invite the mayor and council to the graduation of the Citizen Police Academy that will take place on Monday at the Gallatin Police Department Training Facility located over behind some of the regional. And then to just give a big shout out to and a big thank you to the Gallatin Rehabilitation Center on Northwater for inviting us to their tasting event. It was a really successful event. I was excited to meet Chef Embrel because that's someone that I've watched on the Food Network for several years. And just to be a part of that event with having a tasting of some new food that they'll be implementing and adding to their menu for their residents and families.
Graduation at six, you said?
Graduation is at six.
All right.
Oh, and then to, just wanted to give kudos to Lieutenant Tarkington and Officer Manis who are heading the program up now. We've had some really awesome speakers and great experiences, so it's also something that I would encourage you all to take part in if you have not completed the course yet. I know Councilman Javance graduated in the class last year. I'll be graduating this year, but definitely been a great experience and especially for new people now, we have a gum range day, Councilman Javance, so that was a lot of fun.
They did a fabulous job and I hear so many compliments from the people who have gone through the program.
Yes, I will say, we've had some wonderful speakers and they have definitely made me proud to see the caliber of officers that we have with GPD. They have really shown that they have great pride working for our force and in what they do. And we've had some wonderful presenters that work for the department, so good job, chief.
All right. So finally, we will go to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. If you've been waiting this whole meeting and have something that's not on the agenda that you'd like to speak to, now would be your special time. And you can come forward and speak for five minutes, give us your name and address. Public recognition on non-agenda-related items is open and the podium is yours.
Thank you. My name is Jim Roncall. I reside at 434 Remington Avenue, Gallatin, Tennessee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As someone who's volunteered for many organizations in my life, whether they've been school committee, parish council, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, I know what it's like to only hear the negative, whether in social media or otherwise. And I want to thank this body for what it does. I look forward to being a much more active participant in this city and in this body moving forward. And again, I'd like to thank you all for what you do.
Lovely, thank you. Anyone else? We'll take compliments. Did you have something? Okay.
The elephant in the room, again, Phoenix. A few weeks ago, Mayor, you say we need to make a decision on that building to move forward and I don't see that on the, on the agenda again. So I'm wondering where, when we're going to talk about it, what we're going to do, when we're going to be able to get answers, when we're going to talk about money, because I get asked questions, I don't have answers and I hate, I hate not having answers, basic, basic answers when people ask me questions. So I think that started by a trip south and I looked at how they did their program. They did it fully on the open. I mean, they had public meetings talking about it, they got public input, and we don't do that. And I'm wondering why, because we, we're talking about spending a lot of taxpayer money on something that was going to impact everybody and I think we should have public input.
We have meetings every week. We do not have, we do not have a design, we do not have a plan. All of those things will be forthcoming. I did ask for thoughts on whether it was best to look at a plan that replaced City Hall or one that renovated this building. And I'm not really... or one that renovated this building, and I've not really heard any thoughts from y'all about where you think we should go with that and.
Well, I mean, I found out, I don't mean to interrupt, but I mean, we had just a meeting, was it yesterday?
Yeah. They were here.
I mean, and we all met with them individually, did you not go?
No, because I was, so I could not make it.
Okay, but I mean.
But again, why.
I thought you met with them since you were here yesterday, so.
Hmm?
I just knew you were at City Hall yesterday, I thought you had met with them.
Yeah, I was there and in the morning I was meeting with a developer who asked me to meet with him and after I had the business to do, so.
I don't know.
You know, I have a life outside of here sometimes.
Did they ask you guys, those of you who did meet with them?
They, they met with us and showed us three different plans really and basically like that, and, you know, I guess we all met individually, I mean, we didn't meet together.
Yeah, no, we didn't meet individually.
They were just looking for.
I would say to Star Councilman Juvontz, just see if you can set up a meeting with them, they do have some more information that they presented to us in their, in those individual meetings.
My question is why going to individual meetings behind closed door and why they're not there presenting it to everybody so people can know what's happening?
Because a lot of times they want to get the input and ideas first before they come back and present it to people. You know, most times developers and things do stuff like that.
I, I think probably too, I mean, I feel like particularly with Boyle, and actually had an interesting conversation with a different developer that was talking about just how premium of developers the Boyle Group was and how the gentleman that's been particularly focused on this project, Alan Haynes, was just in that world just so well respected. And ma'am, did you want to speak under public recognition?
I wouldn't speak after him because he speaks without what I want to talk.
Okay, well, we, we had already closed public recognition and.
Then may I just add?
No, no, I will give this body the opportunity to reopen if they desire. Anyway, it was just high compliments for him and what, you know, class development it was and that there is a process and it has been mapped out what the process needs to look at, but when they see things misrepresented and, and really trying to stir up the public to be against something before we even know, I don't think that, that makes them try and get better idea of how to meet everybody's demands, and that's when they meet to ask to meet with individuals. You know, I've met with them several times and given them, sorry, given them what my sense is on things and, but really, as I told you guys a couple of weeks ago, I really felt like I wanted to retain this building. I still feel that to some degree. The thing that was compelling to me was that they offered an option whereby the parking garage wouldn't be as large. And then, you know, and then the scenario, you know, the story that you don't tell when you talk about all the money that we're going to spend, we're going to spend that money anyway. We're trying to create a scenario in which we have new revenue that offsets that cost and, and so if we can create revenue that comes in, replaces the existing parking, brings in hotel, downtown living, the things that people have wanted, it, it might be a good thing, it might not, but until we see what it looks like, see what the numbers are and, and, you know, see if it makes sense, and I do want, I think we all want the public involvement, but to burn it down before we know everything we need to know, I think that's unfair. I think it's unfair to the process, I think it's unfair to people who are looking to invest in our community, and I think it's unfair to us as individuals who live here.
I don't understand why can't we get numbers on the city side? There is options.
What, what?
There is always, always options.
But you want numbers, but they're dependent on the location, whether you use an existing building, whether you buy property here or you buy property there, whether you build this size building, whether you move public works, whether you move the development departments to public works or you put them in the existing city hall, whether you do the, you know, training station and administration with Fire Hall One or you do them separately, whether, what we pay for that land. There are so many numbers that you have to step through to find out before you put them together. I mean, you want numbers on what we're going to pay to rent space for employees if we move out of this building. Well, I'm hoping that we pay very, very little because I have ideas of how it may well be accomplished without costing us as much as it costs them to rent space when they moved out of the courthouse. I mean, we have some options that they don't have, and I think that we can get into some really good places, but you're wanting something that doesn't exist yet and, 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 and to me, really getting a lot of people upset unnecessarily by, you know, telling them that it's going to cost all this money that it's going to cost anyway. What we're trying to do is create new revenue so that it costs less on the taxpayers, so.
And I will say too, Councilman Juvontz, I don't, I don't get the sense that anybody involved with the, with the project is trying to keep the public out of the know. I just think that like council, like Vice Mayor Hayes mentioned, I think they want to see what council's point of view is and then go from there and they are ready to come to meetings and to start putting information out there when the information is available. So I think it would benefit you to have that meeting when you have time, if you have time.
And a lot of times when, when projects are being designed, particularly in a, and they use, they use this term, it's not my own, a contextually sensitive area, they really want feedback, feedback from stakeholders about what something may look like to see if it fits, to see if it looks right, to see if, you know, it's within the scale that is, and that is sensible for the square area.
And I mean, and to that. Bottom line is you got to have a final plan, put out the bid before we're going to know anything, I mean, that's common sense.
Well, I, I think our next big step is to figure out what they are offering us for the space, what our costs are for whatever we decide, which there's going to be a big difference between, not a big difference, but, but, you know, a difference between if we're building new or if we're renovating and how that changes the scaling of their project. Actually had a.
The point I'm making is we have all this information, you can't put a price on it.
Can't put a price on it. I mean, you are right that we're talking about a lot of money, but we're talking about a lot of money any, any way you slice it, so.
And again, you're talking about stakeholders and I think we have a tendency to forget the stakeholders, the main one who's the citizens of the city. They are stakeholders too.
Right.
And it should not be left aside.
You've sat in plenty of rooms where people throw out a bunch of different images and everybody likes something different. And so what do you do? You try and filter something that you get the best response on and then you take that and then sometimes it gets changed along the way and sometimes citizens have great ideas or great input, they offer that, they suggest that. I suspect there will be public meetings where they do take, particularly for the downtown businesses, because they're well aware that these businesses will be impacted, that we don't want, you know, the construction to affect them like the downtown streetscape did years ago, that they've got to be sensitive to making sure that they're accommodated, that they're operational and that all things can continue to happen for them. We don't want the downtown businesses to feel threatened, we want them to feel lifted up, we want them to view this as an opportunity that will help all the downtown businesses long-term. And, and in reality, I, I, I don't how, I truly don't understand how someone could look objectively at all of the opportunities around, not in our square, not in the old square, nothing to do with the old square, the old square is beautiful and it's a main as it is, but when you look at the areas around there, some of the stuff that was built in the 70s, my granddaddy built the motel down here. I would not be sad to see it become something different one day, you know? We've seen the car lot talk about, you know, they're moving to a smaller footprint and they want to repurpose their building for something. I think this is all about the redevelopment of the periphery of the square and we've had so many conversations about it over the years, and while I never expected to some, for somebody to come to us about this parcel of land, I remember when I was first asked, I was like, well, I never thought about that, but I can't say no because it could be a great solution, and we don't know if it's a great solution yet.
Let's see. Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to reopen public comments.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ma'am, public comments reopened.
I'm Martha Zangar, I live at 151 East Bornes Drive, and I just, when you started talking about the public meetings, it's, it woke me up because I feel like, again, I haven't been coming here long, so I, I don't know the history, but when I come here and I, I see things being voted on, it's like all the votes were taken back there and we come in and just hear the, the outcome basically. And so I appreciated, excuse me, Councilman Juvontz bringing up the fact that some of these things should require open public meetings, not for us to decide, because you, we voted you in to decide, but for us to have that input. And, you know, some of the projects might be not good for the community, they might be great for the community, but there's a lot of people out there that are just, you know, excuse my language, bitching and moaning, and there's a lot of us coming here trying to make it better, make Gallatin better, and we, we do want that input, but for the eight or 10 weeks that I've been coming, I feel like everything is shut out for the people that are sitting out here, week after week, and you can see it's, some of it's the same people over and over. And I think we just want to feel like we're involved, but when you shut down the input just because it's a point of legal order, that, that really does close us out and that's, all the projects that are coming in affect our quality of life, including, excuse me, all of the new developments going in. We don't have any say on who, where a development gets to go in, we don't even know they're coming until all of a sudden the traffic's backed up. So I think we are the stakeholders and we should have a little more input at, at these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. And typically, it's a little more clear, but we went a different direction after, right after we finished public comment, and so I did not do as I would normally do and say, anyone else wish to speak? So typically I would, I apologize for that.
Well, I didn't hear closed, now.
Well, and I may not have even said it because all of a sudden somebody said, I have other business that I'd skipped over, so we went back, so you, you may well be in the right net and I'm glad that the motion was made for you to speak. Anyone else that wishes to speak, since public recognition is back open. Okay, seeing that, public recognition on non-agenda related items is closed. Think we exhausted other business this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, have a lovely evening, y'all take care, be kind to one another, share a smile.